trustee Ansari. Orinsky.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Slavens. Let the Brooklyn Republican Clerk Seigris is in attendance and Graham Hudek.
Good evening and welcome to our new trustee, Amara Ansari. It's our first meeting. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. First, we have a presentation recognition to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month and celebrating the heritages and culture of Native Americans and the contributions of Native Americans to Canton Township. Trustee Ganguly, do you want to read that?
Yeah. Resolution of the Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, resolution to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month and celebrating the heritages and cultures of Native Americans and the contribution of Native Americans to Canton Township. Whereas the United States celebrates the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month, an opportunity to acknowledge the contribution of Native Americans to the history of the United States, whereas Native Americans speak and preserve indigenous languages which have contributed to the English language by being used as the names of individuals and locations throughout the United States and Michigan, whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance to be shared with future generations. Whereas the influence of the Eroqua Confederacy on the founding fathers was instrumental in the drafting of the Constitution of the United States with the concept of freedom of speech, separation of governmental powers, and a system of checks and balances between the branches of government, whereas the state of Michigan derives its name from the Algonquin word "mishigama", meaning great water, whereas the land that is Canton Township was ceded to the United States on November 17th, 1807, with the signing of the Treaty of Detroit between the United States and the Ottawa, Chipewa, Wyandotte, and Potawatomi, sorry, I'm getting this wrong, Potawatomi Native American nations. Whereas Canton Township recognizes and recognizes the presence of the three major groups in Michigan today, the Chipewa, Ottawa, and the Potawatomi, who have lived upon this land since time immemorial and values the progress our society has accomplished through Native American thought and culture, whereas Tonkwish Creek, which runs through Canton Township, is named after the Potawatomi chief whose band inhabited the lands prior to the United States settlement in the 1820s, whereas the Potawatomi tribes in the Midwest were forcibly removed from their ancestral homelands by order of the US government, resulting in the Potawatomi Trail of Death, whereas Canton Township's history as the sweet corn capital of Michigan would not have been possible without the domestication and cultivation of wild corn by the Anashnabi people, whereas Canton Township has reasons to honor the great achievements and contributions of Native Americans and their ancestors, whereas in the spring of 2023, the Polkagun Band of Potawatomi Indians' Representation Outreach Board voted to recommend the name ZB West, which means creek, for the parcel at the Ford and Ridge Road, and the trustees designated to name the parcel as ZB West Nature Area, whereas in July 2024, the Polkagun Band of Potawatomi Indians' Representation Outreach Board voted to recommend the name Zeshquidokan, which means place of mushrooms, for the 27 acres of undeveloped parcel adjacent to the Lower Rouge Trail, and the trustees designated to name the parcel as Zeshquidokan Nature Area. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize the month of November as Native American Heritage Month and urges the people of Canton Township to observe Native American Heritage Month with appropriate programs and activities.
Support.
Motion made by Tanya Ganguly, supported by Summer Foster. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion passes. Now, we have a presentation of the Chamber of Membership Award. We have the President of the Chamber, Thomas Payton.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Thomas Payton, the President of the Canton Chamber of Commerce, and it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. A couple of weeks ago, the Canton Chamber actually hosted its annual Canton People's Choice Awards, where we were able to award more than 40 businesses in our community and give them recognition on that night throughout our community. One of the segments of awards that we distributed was Membership Anniversary Awards, and this year actually marks the 40th anniversary of membership that the township has held with the Canton Chamber of Commerce. You know, we thank you for the longstanding support of our organization. The Chamber has been around since February of 1972, so literally, the township has been a member of our organization for almost the entire time of our incorporation as a nonprofit serving the community. As I present this award, obviously, this is a membership anniversary award, but I believe even more so than that, it's very symbolic of the longstanding partnership that our organization has always maintained with the township. And so, we thank you for the dynamic relationship and partnership that the Chamber has had over the years, and it's always been my goal to ensure that we continue to grow and strengthen this partnership. So, on behalf of the Canton Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, it's my pleasure and honor to present to you the Charter Township of Canton Board this 48-year anniversary. We thank you for your support and commitment to our organization.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas.
Chamber of Commerce is now downstairs, so we have a great new partnership forming. Thanks, Thomas. Next, we're having a Board and Commissioner Report from the Canton Cares Fund Annual Report. Did you have a video also, Laura?
I do, but I don't, Greg is doing it, I think. I can get started, though, until it's...
Oh, there you go.
Perfect, okay. My name is Laura Mortier. I'm the Recreation Manager for Canton Community Development, and I am also the Chair of the Canton Cares Fund. If you don't know, the Canton Cares Fund was created in 2018 in partnership with the Canton Community Foundation, and that is a way for us to support our residents in need during disaster relief. It also supports programs of ours, therapeutic recreation, that serves both children and adults with disabilities, as well as our youth programs that serve under privileged youth, as well as seniors who are homebound. And then, also, it doesn't stop there. There's scholarship opportunities and, as well as employee recognition, which is really nice as well. So, it's a little bit about the fund. Our next slide here is just showing our membership. So, we have, per our bylaws, seven members that advise how the funds are spent, just making sure that it's in accordance with our bylaws and the mission of the fund. That is myself, Tammy Hagerty, Joyce Jones, Christina Wilson, and Stephen Yaros. Their years that they began on the committee are listed there. And then, just recently, through an application and interview process with some of the board members, we have just selected our two members to fill our gaps, which are Quindell Simmons and Andrew Graves. They will be joining us at our last meeting here in December, actually, on Monday. Jessie Buncheck and Beth Mead serve as representatives in support on the council, or on the fund. Jessie is our administrative assistant, and Beth Mead, for those of you who know her, she's the COO of the Canton Community Foundation. She is our foundation rep on that as well. So, just a little snapshot of 2024, we did see a little bit lower numbers in donations. The majority of our donations are from individual donors or some sponsorships, but we're seeing kind of that lower number across the board in 2024. So, we did bring in $7,200 this year in 2024, and since our inception, over $114,000. We would like to take the opportunity to thank Al's Asphalt, Jacob Matthew Jewelers, Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, as well as Nalox and Safety Kits. They were corporate businesses that donated private funds to us. Again, with the smaller number, we did send donation letters out to over 400 organizations and business, both in January, and then just redid here in November in hopes that some for Giving Tuesday would also find Canton Cares the place that they'd like to donate. On top of individual donations and business donations, our committee itself hosts two fundraisers annually to help keep funds coming into Canton Cares. For those of you, several of you have participated in it, but we held our third annual road rally on May 18th that takes people all over the community doing fun, tricks, puzzles, clues that they have to solve, all in the name of charity. So, we brought in over $2,000 for that. And in 2025, we will have some sort of fundraiser on May 17th, but the committee is looking to potentially switch up what it is and rotate with the road rally every year, just to prevent burnout. Sometimes it gets boring to do it year after year, so we're going to look to kind of switch that up. And then, we have combined our chili cook-off with Brew's Brats and Bands, which is a big win for us, because we have over 500 people that attend that event annually. It was in Heritage Park this year due to some construction at Preservation, but it was held on the 14th. Participating businesses to bring in some chili were Silvio's, Maraschino's, Local North, Crow's Nest, and Holiday Market. I'm drawing a blank on who got first place right now, but the chili was delicious. Over $2,000 was raised. Again, that went directly into the fund. September 13th of 2025 is the date, if you'd like to save that in your calendars. And then, this is just a really brief synopsis of how the fund throughout the year and years supports both Canton programs, residents, and employees. So, obviously, as government employees, we're not using taxpayer funds to do any kind of recognition, so it's really nice when those credit unions or those local businesses donate money to the fund to be able to recognize our employees. So, that was employee picnics, Canton Fire Banquet, police awards, employee tailgate that those funds have helped support. And again, I should note that businesses actually donate in that name. That's not just us taking funds to do that. They set aside specific money to support employees. Mastermind internship is a really neat one. So, our Lead Like a Girl program through the Block Youth and Teen Center provides young girls with summer internships every Wednesday during the summer months. The Canton Cares Fund then is able to pay those girls for their internships those days that they work. Police support, we all know, right? Our police department sees and takes care of things and handle things that the average person does not. So, sometimes grief services or counseling is needed. We have supplied food and drink for those types of programs for the police as well. One of our neat ones this year, too, was a landscape project. There was a senior living in Canton who has mobility issues, her recent widow as well. The landscaping had gotten so out of control, she couldn't even access her front door at that point. So, our fund paid for a landscaping company to come out and clear, and that's a picture of her cleared house. And then, just recently, a request came in for New Hope Grief Center to come in and work with our seniors for grief counseling and program. So, I believe that is it. If anyone has any questions, otherwise, more information, myself as the Chair, or Beth Mead from the Community Foundation can answer.
Thanks, Laura. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Usually, we get like a sense of how much is in the fund, like left in the fund at the year end.
I can give you that number. Yep, I have it. It's just in my computer, so I will make sure that I follow up with you guys on that. It's sitting really nice, too, because funds are coming in and out pretty regularly, but I will get that updated information.
Okay. Yeah, and also wondering about the family that had the fire? And if there have been any requests for helping them out?
We have not yet. So, typically, actually, how when requests come in for support, we kind of vet the situation a little bit and see first what services in the area can support for those certain needs. So, if it's water being shut off or closed, we're checking in with the Salvation Army first, we're checking in with the water, things like that first, to see what options are before we give funds. So, I know they're probably receiving maybe some support right now for some other entities, where ours can be kind of a backfall, or in the future, if they're needing support, then that's just a simple request, and we can work through them for that.
Thank you.
And we work closely, too, with public safety, and a lot of the times, we'll hear about these needs because they've done a call or they've been out there, and we know we've exhausted options, so then they'll come to us and say, hey, we have a resident who needs a landscaping project done. You know, there's no other options right now to support them. Can the Canton Cares Fund help?
Thank you. Amara?
Hi, Laura. I wanted to ask, you mentioned at the beginning that most of your funding comes from individual donors. Are you interested in foundational support? What does that look like? Is that something that you've been looking into?
Yeah. Are you talking like from the community getting the word out about donating? When you say foundational support?
No, I mean philanthropy, so philanthropic organizations that typically...
Oh, like do work and donate to us? Yes, that is 100% something we're looking for. A lot of those groups, especially here in Canton, right, they have their own missions. So, Lions and Vision and those types of things, but we've partnered with Chicks for Charity in the past to host like a trivia night to donate to the fund. There's been a couple other, or just actually recently, at the holiday, our farmer's market, there was a man selling, and his proceeds were going to the Canton Cares Fund. So, yes, we are looking for those. It's just finding the people that don't already have missions that they're supporting. So, if you have any connections, we would love that.
Okay, thanks.
We're excited, too. Our two new members that are joining bring a different perspective, right? So, when you're getting different people that are connected in different places doing the same work, it's exciting. So, we're excited for the two new members, too, to come onboard. So, any suggestions or help, we'll always take it, because we're always looking to fund and support our programs.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Great job. Our next presentation is on the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage Annual Report. Kevin Ryan.
Hi, everyone. Well, they're pulling my presentation up. My name is Kevin Ryan, and I work with Canton Community Development and the Village Arts Factory as the Community Program Director for Cherry Hill Village, and I also serve as the Chair of the Canton Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage. And I'm excited to be here tonight to share a little bit about the work of the Commission over the last year and a few projects that are still ongoing. For those who might not be familiar with this Commission, our mission is to enrich the Canton community by celebrating its diversity, promoting its creative spirit, and honoring its history, and our vision is leading an engaged, fulfilled, and unified community. You could see a makeup of the current commissioners on the Commission. Besides many members at large, we also have representation from the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, Plymouth Canton Community Schools, the Chamber of Commerce, the Historical Society, the Youth Advisory Council, and the Township Board of Trustees. And you can see from the dates here that a lot of our commissioners are new within the last few years. So, we have a lot of new, fresh faces on the Commission that have really brought a new energy and dynamic to the Commission over the last few years. The Commission is also supported by several staff members of Canton Township, including John LaFever, who is the Director of Canton Community Development, Jessie Buncheck, who is Executive Assistant. She also serves as our Recording Secretary for meetings and remains our primary forms of communication to all the commissioners. Ben Frick at the Theater is our Performing Arts Coordinator, and Laura Mortier, who you just heard from, is the Recreation Supervisor, who also serves on the Commission. Some quick member stats here, the commissioners serve three-year terms. We have 14 current commissioners. According to our bylaws, we can have 17 max, and four new members joined in 2024, and we have two new members starting in the coming year, in 2025. One of the things we did this year is to do a little bit of rebranding and working with the Canton Communications and Marketing Department. We decided that we needed to refresh our logo, as Canton Township has also refreshed some of their logo work. We felt that with our new dynamism and new vibrancy in the Commission and many new members, that we wanted a logo to reflect that. So, you can see the old logo above, and then the current refreshed one, which matches more closely with the current Canton Township logo, and also definitely with the colors and the dynamic lines sort of showcases the direction of the Commission and the work that we're doing. This year, we also decided to do a refresh of the Commission's website, instead of having just a static website that just had information about the Commission. The commissioners wanted to have a more dynamic website that also could serve as a resource for the community, for those who are searching for cultural events, historical events, or different venues in the township. So, now, our website has multiple tabs that can take residents and anyone interested to a variety of websites, locations throughout Canton Township that align with our mission. You can see there's tabs for arts, culture, heritage, and also some press from news releases and things that have been covered that the Commission has done the past year. One of the primary goals of the Commission, especially over the last few years, is to serve as a sort of de facto volunteer corps that can be present in a lot of our Canton events and cultural opportunities, and they help support the event by their presence, but also share about the information about the Commission and what they do. You can see here that they've supported 14 community events over the last year through their presence, planning, and guidance. Just a few examples listed here, Pride Outside, Art in Bloom, the Canton Chinese Festival, Artoberfest, Christmas in the Village, the Festival of Lights, Brew's Brats and Bands, our outdoor cultural movie nights in Cherry Hill Village, Liberty Fest, National Nightout, MLK Day, and the Spotlight on TR, and these all had representation from the Commission. One of our major projects this past year was the beautiful mural that you can now see in Heritage Park, which is related to the Poetry Project. We were actually contacted by a poet and artist in the United Kingdom who wanted to partner with Canton Township to bring the Poetry Project here. The Poetry Project is a worldwide initiative that James McInerney from the UK started, and the idea is to bring art and poetry out into public spaces where it can be encountered in unexpected places. The goal is to bring goodness and light into public spaces and also increase mental well-being. And so, the Cultural Commission took on this project with the poet, and we partnered with Gabby Dolan, who is an artist from the Village Arts Factory. Using our Artist Laureate Fund that we had collected over the past few years, we were able to commission Gabby to paint this mural on the side of the bathroom complex in Heritage Park located by the north pavilions. You can see that the mural features local Michigan wildflowers and plant life, and Gabby actually drew a lot of her inspiration from some of the park and play equipment nearby to create sort of a congruous picture here. The official ribbon cutting for this took place at Summer Palooza in Heritage Park, and this is just the first of what we're hoping to be several of these projects that will pop up throughout Canton through the work of the Commission. Spotlight on TR was an event that we launched this past year. It was an opportunity for Canton to celebrate the contributions and work of the special needs community here in the township. We had our very first one this past year, and this event actually came out of the Commission. One of our commissioners brought it up at a meeting as something that they thought would be great for the township, and so, we partnered with the Therapeutic Recreation Department here in Canton, along with the Village Arts Factory and Canton Leisure Services, and hosted our first Spotlight on TR event, which we hope will become an annual tradition, and here in Canton will be able to have these celebrations where we honor and showcase the work of the special needs community throughout the township. This past year, we also saw a great mediation between the Commission and Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and we have a bunch of projects sort of in the works right now, working with those two organizations, along with the Village Arts Factory and Leisure Services. We're hoping, like you saw with the public mural from the Poetry Project, to have some student public art installations installed in various public places throughout the township. We're excited to be working with the Village Arts Factory, where they will be hosting high school senior art exhibits on a monthly rotating basis. We're looking to include some student art on Canton Trails and Park Paths, again, so that the public can experience some public student art in places where they normally wouldn't encounter it, and then also working with the DDA to hopefully have some student art on the banners that are along Ford Road on the light posts. This is a project that's now entering its second year. The township has taken on what we're calling a 50-year cultural retrospective of the township, and it's documenting the historical and sociopolitical trends over the last 50 years that have really contributed to Canton's growing diversity and changes in population, and how that's affected Canton's cultural milieu over the past 50 years. So, this year, now we have a subcommittee who has sort of spearheading this process, which will include interviews with various restaurant owners and business owners, Canton residents, also collecting a lot of paraphernalia related to this project, like stories, photographs, ethnic garments, music, art, and cultural items, and then also doing the data, looking at the data over the past 50 years and seeing how demographic shifts have contributed to Canton's diversity over the last 50 years. And what will be fun is that we're hoping this whole project will culminate this coming November with a special art gallery exhibit at the Village Arts Factory, where all this information can be displayed in an interactive and immersive way. And again, if there's any questions for me, my information is here on the last slide. I serve as the Commission Chair, and I'm readily available for any questions or thoughts from the community as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? You know, the one you had on the mural, so you know, we just redid the pool area, and that whole wall is blank, and we were talking about, you know, we had put some of the tiles in, like the fish and things like that for the kids.
Yes.
Well, maybe include that, doing a mural there.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Because that's just a big blank wall, but it didn't need to be painted on.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think it's something the Commission could definitely take on.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Approval of Minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 30th, October 15th, and November 12th, 2024?
Support, or so moved?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to pay the bills? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment on agenda items only? Our link is not working, so it's only in the room today, tonight, unfortunately. So, any public comments on the agenda? Okay, agenda item only, public comment closed. Payment of bills, please.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Support.
It may my Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for applied innovation. C2, consider approving an increase in the blanket purchase order issued to AcuMed Billing Incorporated. Item C3, consider approving an increase in the blanket purchase orders issued to Air Gas. Item C3, consider approving an increase in the blanket purchase orders issued to Airgas Great Lakes. Item C4, consider approval of 2025 Building Board of Appeals meeting dates. C5, consider approval of a purchase order increase for suburban calcium chloride sales. C6, consider 2025 Planning Commission meeting schedule. C7, considers 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting schedule. C8, consider a purchase order for near map aerial imagery, subscription renewal. And finally, item C9, consider second reading of amendments to Chapter 54 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled Peddlers and Solicitors.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the general calendar. Item 1, consider authorization of purchase order for Wade Trim to perform professional engineering services and survey work.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the purchasing policy, which requires at least three proposals, and award this work directly to Wade Trim and to approve a purchase order for Wade Trim to perform professional engineering services and survey work for the Canton Township hydraulic and hydrologic and hydraulic analysis PAS study in the amount of $89,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As part of the upgrades and improvements at the Village Arts Factory campus, Leisure Services has requested assistance with obtaining engineering design services for necessary changes to the existing parking lot. Engineering services? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, it's at the bottom.
Kirk, yeah.
Hmm, jumped to the bottom of that agenda. No, it's G1 on here. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order to be issued to Wade Trim for professional engineering service and survey work in the amount of $89,000. This work is needed as part of the required match to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers planning assistance to state's program and their efforts to develop a water resources plan. Canton Township Hydrologic and Hydraulic Analyst Study. The expenses paid to Wade Trim will be applied to the required match of $150,000. A self-certification of financial capability for this analysis was presented by the Finance Director at the June 11, 2024 meeting of the Township Board. Director Norwood, do you want to add to that and talk about, kind of give a background again?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This is the second part of our commitment to this project that we're working together with the Army Corps of Engineers to study the township, well, parts of this township in relation to flooding issues that we've had. Specifically, we'll be looking at Fowler Creek and Fellows Creek, and they'll be doing, this Wade Trim work will be doing the survey and assessment work of, that's required for this study to come to fruition. The Army Corps has dedicated staff to put together the study for us. It's going to take 18 to 24 months, but we're looking forward to this, because this is one of the steps that will be taken to address flooding in the township.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? So this is something, when are they going to be kicked off, then?
Well, they've already started doing some things, but this will happen pretty quickly with Wade Trim, because they're ready to go, jump on board right away.
Amira?
Are environmental considerations part of the study?
Well, this is kind of a technical analysis, though we will be looking at some environmental issues, especially when it comes to the Lower Rouge River.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approving a proposal for Village Arts Factory parking lot improvement design.
Madam Supervisor, I move to accept the attached Fishbeck proposal for the Village Arts Factory parking lot improvements, design, and to issue a purchase order the above-described amount.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. As part of the upgrades and improvements at the Village Arts Factory campus, Leisure Services has requested assistance with obtaining engineering design services for necessary changes to the existing parking lot. Engineering Services received a proposal from the approved list of consultants for engineering design services needed to perform the requested scope of work. Engineering Services is recommending award of the proposal to Fishbeck for parking lot design and construction for $27,000 plus $2,700 contingency for a total award of $29,700. Director Norwood, do you want to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Taken off consent. Item G3, establish Board of Trustees' meeting dates for 2025 and consider closing the Canton Township Administration Building on December 26, 2025.
Madam Supervisor, I move to establish the Canton Township Board of Trustees' meeting schedule for the year 2025 as follows. The Township Board shall meet on the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth Tuesdays of each month in regular session excluding April 1st, May 27th, June 3rd, September 23rd, and to approve the closure of the Administration Building on December 26, 2025. The first, third, and fifth Tuesdays, the Township Board shall meet in a work or study session at 6:00 PM, and all other meetings shall be at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. In accordance...
Diane, it wasn't me.
Oh, Diane, it was Treasurer Slavens. I'm sorry, throwing voices. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and the Charter Township Act, the Township Board of Trustees is required to establish and post a schedule of board meetings for the calendar year. Additionally, in previous years, the township has closed around the winter holidays to allow employees to rest and recharge. The township has already closed on Thursday, December 25th. It is being proposed to close the Administration Building on Friday, December 26th, and grant employees one extra PTO day that they will be required to use on December 26th. Those who are unable to take the time off due to the nature of their position will be given an alternate day off or credited with one day of PTO to be used in accordance with the administrative guidelines, which will be provided to employees should the board approve this RBA. Actually, Clerk Seeger, do you want to comment on that?
Is that your RBA? No. Unless, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval of Floton Park Tennis Court resurfacing.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve waiving the bid and submitting a 2025 purchase order to Tennis Courts Unlimited Incorporated for the tennis court restoration of Floton Park for a total cost of $14,500.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In April 2024, the Leisure Services Department advertised an invitation to bid for the tennis court restoration at Griffin Park. Due to the price coming in at much lower cost, the board approved to award Tennis Courts Unlimited to resurface the tennis courts at Griffin Park and resurface the pickleball courts at Freedom Park. Because the work provided by Tennis Courts Unlimited was of good quality with fast and efficient service, Leisure Services staff solicited a quote from the same vendor to resurface the two remaining tennis courts at Floton Park. Tennis Courts Unlimited agreed to hold the same unit price for 2025 construction for a total of $14,500 for two courts. To lock this price in and to be placed on the early spring construction timeline, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to waive the bid process and award Tennis Courts Unlimited to resurface the Floton Park tennis courts in 2025 for a total cost of $14,500. Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Tanya, Trustee Ganguly.
So for the Griffin Park, the construction that has already happened, did we get any feedback? Because there were a lot of people, I think there were a few people that came and had some public comments on this issue in the past when we were discussing, and they were concerned that there were more pickleball courts than tennis courts, and they wanted these to be repaired. So have we gotten any feedback? Because it says here, you know, the repairs are great, but...
Yeah, the courts that were resurfaced, both pickleball and tennis, the users have been happy with. It's kind of a Band-Aid fix, the last two, three years, maybe four, and then we'll have to do it again until someday we do a complete replacement on those, but we'll have to continually do this type of maintenance.
But this is a maintenance thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to Trustee Ganguly, I remember a gentleman came and he was talking about the tennis courts and the need for upkeep. Do you know when the projects will be completed?
We anticipate that we will be early on their schedule, so it would be early spring of 2025. So as soon as kind of the weather permits, we should be able to be early on their schedule. Last year, the work wasn't completed until, I believe, September. So it was kind of, but we awarded it much later, and we're kind of placed on the back of their list. So now we can get early on their list to be completed early spring of 2025, hopefully before the tennis season starts.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Greg, about how often does a tennis court need to be resurfaced?
With this type of repair, it'll be every two to three years, maybe four, depending on kind of the weather conditions.
Okay, and at what point would we consider just completely redoing it rather than resurfacing?
That's kind of a budgetary thing. We should be able to kind of go on for a while like this, or able to make some significant crack fill repairs, but a total replacement if we wanted to do it kind of up to the latest standard. All of our carts, courts are asphalt. We would remove those and do concrete courts, which would last significantly longer, but it would be a significant expense as well.
Okay.
You'd have to do this multiple times before it would cost as much as a total replacement.
Right, right. Yeah, I was in an LSAC Subcommittee meeting with Abe today, so we were talking about the courts. And I just note that we have not resurfaced these since they were repaved in 2009, so it's more than overdue.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is consider approval of updated investment policy.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the updated investment policy.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The Charter Township of Canton Investment Policy was approved in 1998 and amended in 1999. At the recommendation of the Board of Trustees, the Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer have reviewed the existing investment policy and are recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the updated investment policy as presented. Although the policy has been rewritten in its entirety, there are only a few changes that have been made to the overall context of the policy. These include a maximum investment time of five years for three years, a revised section on policies and internal controls, and new guidelines for the quarterly and annual report. There's also a sentence added to recognize that pension funds are covered under a different state act and administered by MERS. So Mr. Bruce, would you like to comment on anything? Yes?
Okay. I don't have anything to add other than it really hasn't changed that much. It's just kind of prettier to look at than it used to be. Back in 1998, everybody in Michigan had to have one of these, and we all adopted the exact same one. But we have not gone back and looked at ours again, so I don't know if anybody has any questions for Diane or myself.
Questions or comments? Okay, I'm sorry, can't see you.
I just wanted to thank Diane for answering some of the questions I had about this.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the next one is G6, authorize Canton Township to joint legal action against the Michigan Public Services Commission Order interpreting Public Act 233 of 2023.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize Foster Swift to file an appeal or other appropriate legal action on Canton's behalf to challenge the Michigan Public Service Commission's October 10, 2024 Order interpreting Public Act 2233, and to allow the Township Supervisor to sign all necessary documents to join Canton Township with other Michigan municipalities in the legal action challenging the Michigan Public Service Commission's Order interpreting Public Act 233.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Foster Swift, Collins, and Smith, representing municipal clients across Michigan, intends to challenge the Michigan Public Service Commission's recent order regarding Public Act 233 of 2023. This legal action arises from the MPSC's erroneous interpretation of local authority over renewable energy projects, which according to the municipalities and their legal counsel, oversteps the commission's authority and undermines local control. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add to that?
Yes, there are now over 80 municipalities in Michigan that have joined this appeal, including several county governments. You know, essentially what the Michigan Public Service Commission's order does is it takes away the control for citing utility scale, solar wind, and battery projects away from local governments and turns that power over to a three-member group appointed by the governor of the state of Michigan. And so this is pretty wide, wide-ranging ruling, which has the potential to not only take away local control when it comes to issues of citing utility scale, energy projects, but also would remove local elected officials and local residents from the citing decision-making process. So that's why we're being asked to join this appeal.
Any comments or questions? Tanya? Did you have one? Okay, true.
Thank you. Joe, I was just wondering, it looks like there was a November 8 deadline to file this appeal. So we're joining after that. Has the deadline changed, or is it just they just keep wanting more municipalities to join?
Yeah, municipalities have continued to join even after the November 8 deadline. That was the deadline for Foster Swift to file the appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next one is consider an appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council.
Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Trina Robertson to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council for a three-year term to expire on 12/31/2027.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council will have a vacancy as of January 1, 2025. After meeting with all recent applicants, the Board and Commission's Interview Committee recommends Trina Robertson for membership on the council. Is Trina here today? Sometimes she's online, but, no, okay. Any comments? Summer?
I'll just comment. The interview committee interviewed Trina, Kate and I did, and Emery, you were on, right? Yes. But she was wonderful. I think she'd be a great addition to the CDBG board, and actually, I thought she would be great on any board, but she was fantastic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, I echo what Trustee Foster said, and also, I just want to say this was a no-brainer for us. She's great, very enthusiastic, and I think she will be an asset to that council.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we are at the section for additional public comments. We don't have any in line because we are not in line today, but I just want to let everybody know, this is a one-way comment. We don't, we aren't going back and forth. You can give us your comments, and the boards will take consideration. The comments are for three minutes for each person, and so we will start with, if you want to go up to the podium one at a time, you can go up in any order you'd like. Please state your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Mike Kennedy, and I live here in Canton at 50078 Van Buren Street. Other questions, or go ahead?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Mike Kennedy, and I retired in 2023 as a captain with the Canton Police Department. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the recent decision to significantly raise healthcare costs for retirees. The proposed increase is nearly three times the cost for retirees compared to current employees and represents a $2,200 increase over 2023 rates. This places an undue financial burden on our retired community members, many of whom contributed significantly to this community when it needed it the most. Some of you were here during the 2010 economic downturn and can remember the concessions, the furlough days, the hiring freezes that these employee groups accepted to support the township in its time of need. This decision is particularly disheartening, given that the board recently ran for reelection or election on a platform of strong employee support. Strong employee support includes supporting our employees even after they've retired. At a recent board meeting on November 12, several key financial decisions were made, including a 2.5 wage, 2.5% wage increase for part-time employees, a retirement notification incentive, a $6,000 increase for part-time trustees, a 25% increase of top pay for directors and chiefs, the retitling of the human resources manager position to human resources director, aligning it with other directors, and moving it up three levels on the merit commission pay scale. While I support employee raises when warranted, this seems untimely, given that the healthcare system was facing a deficit, as disclosed by Kaepernick yesterday. The next day, employee healthcare rates were... The next day, employee healthcare rates were announced with a 69% increase, and two days later, Canton Township doubled down and announced that retiree rates were going to be issued with a 167% increase from 2023. These increases came with no communication, no forewarning, no education. They say the timing is everything, but I would say that we missed the mark on this. As you know, Canton's healthcare system is self-funded, and the township can easily opt out of Public Act 152. The law allows local units of government, such as yourselves, to opt out of these limitations with a two-thirds vote of the governing body. This flexibility means that you have the ability to make different choices regarding healthcare contributions for our retirees. I urge the board to reconsider the increase in healthcare costs and honor your commitment to supporting employees. I encourage you to charge the Human Resources Department to explore other options. To say that this is the best we can do is simply not acceptable in Canton Township. The leadership and experience that is filling this room is confident, if not positive, that other more cost-effective options exist and simply weren't explored or offered. I ask that these options be thoroughly explored, clearly communicated, and revisited through a special open enrollment cycle.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Deb Bilbry-Hanselwitz, and I was hired as Canton's first community center manager in 1994. That was prior to the opening of the summit. I worked in progressively more responsible positions, finally serving as Leisure Services Director and retiring in December of 2016. When the economic downturn affected the Canton, the community, Canton Township leadership, the departments, and employees came together to creatively overcome the devastating financial crisis. As their contribution, the employees were asked to take furlough days, benefits were eliminated, wage scales and step increases were frozen, medical benefit plans changed, and pension plans were restructured. I was personally there. I vividly recall how extremely difficult this was. And though it was significant hardship, the employees all voted or agreed to take those concessions. This was accomplished through numerous employee meetings, employee committees, excellent communication, and a general spirit of unity and cooperation in order to preserve the township. And in good faith, those concessions would be restored. The retirees here tonight represent many of those employees. Please work with us and advocate for us with healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I am here today to talk about the radioactive waste issue that we've been dealing with. So to those of you who are unaware of the situation, just four miles away, by the way, I'm Jessica Peterson. I reside in Canton. Four miles away from my house, there's a very hazardous waste facility that harbors radioactive waste. And I am going to try my best to express how utterly disappointed I am in our administration over decades for allowing this to happen, just as it has. So we have, we're faced with having the most, one of the most hazardous waste facilities in the country. Only five sites could accept the type of waste that we are accepting. The reason we're accepting it is because it's extremely cheap, and Michigan profits off of receiving this type of waste. But what exactly does this waste entail? Unfortunately, I had to do the research myself because the narrative was in such a way that they tried to prohibit us from understanding this. This radioactive waste is the worst type of radioactive waste that exists, radium-226. Our bodies identify it as calcium and absorbs it in our bones when we come in contact with radium-226. That hazardous landfill is within 500 feet of an elementary school. And the reason we're receiving the waste predominantly from other states is because other states have passed legislation to stop this waste from being in their states, yet we're receiving it because we profit from it. We, with the help of Anne and other townships, have filed a lawsuit. So we were able to prohibit the waste from coming, but unfortunately, the waste that we're prohibiting is coming from other projects as well. I am so disappointed because it was my research that I had to do on my own to understand that the cancer clusters that exist in other states as a result of this have to meet bi-weekly in other states because the cancer has ran through the, the location so much. I'm disheartened to understand that I was made aware of the concentration limits being a low level according to our administration, EGLE and Republic Services. Now, the low level that they made us aware of at Wayne Disposal, up the street, on Denton Road, they said that the concentration levels were low enough to where we should not be concerned. What they failed to tell us, and most people were aware of this, is that within that site, Wayne Disposal, there's another site called Michigan Disposal Waste Treatment Plant. That plant can take an uncapped amount of radioactive waste. Our administration did not tell us that because they're making money off of that. I, a citizen, had to find that out for myself. So there's not enough time for me to talk about this. I have a, I have a page, a group, Michigan Against Atomic Waste. But what I'm telling you is, for one, there should not be an elementary school there. For one, we should not be still accepting this type of waste. And if other states have refused to take it, we cannot continue to allow our landfills to go sky-high to accept this.
And if anyone wants to talk to you, they can afterwards.
Please, 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 I urge you guys to do more research on this.
Next?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name's Barb Brulette. As many of you know, I've served in HR for, I served Canton Township for 20 years and served specifically the HR department for 15-plus years. Many of those years, my primary focus was on benefit administration, so this is very near and dear to my heart, and I have a really good understanding of it, along with the Finance Department. The plans created in 2013 remained unchanged, except for enhancements, and we were always able to remain under the hard cap. In the past five years, we added stop-loss insurance to the self-insurance plans to mitigate Canton risk. It is important to note that stop-loss mitigates the risk for the township, but does not provide any medical benefits to the, to actives or retirees. The CapNIC representative confirmed that stop-loss premiums are included in the illustrative rates because they have always been. True, they have always been, but we have always been able to stay under the hard cap and it had no impact on employee premium sharing. Now that we have exceeded the hard cap, that has to be looked at closer, and we have asked CapNIC to verify that it is even permissible. Historically, the employee premium sharing and the retiree premium sharing for self-funded 55-to-64 year-old retirees in the open enrollment plans have been very close. However, 2025 premium sharing, the active premiums, and the retiree premiums are much different, which caused us all to question what took place. Foyers were submitted, request for information was submitted, and to date, we have received no information. We believe the stop-loss insurance premiums are the, one of the reasons that we are over the hard cap. My questions tonight, which can be followed up with a FOIA if requested, what changes have been made to the stop-loss over the past five years? How did the stop-loss premiums impact each individual subgroup on both the active and retiree sides? How are the insurance rates calculated to ensure active employees and retirees in the open enrollment group are not subsidizing employees who do not have premium sharing? In closing, we appeal to you, the board, to put a pause on this year's open enrollment. Let us investigate this further. We're willing to help. There was many of us that were involved, have the historical knowledge, work closely with the employee groups. So please, help us. The historical knowledge was not there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Cox. I worked here for 23 years and just retired in April from the Finance Department. I just want to say thank you for your attention to this important issue. We are very grateful to have retiree healthcare coverage and that the township does provide that. That was a very major consideration for, I'm sure, every single retiree when they were making that decision. But I don't think any of us expected to see a 167% increase in our deductible in one year. And for many people on a fixed income, that's very frightening. If that happened this year, what's going to happen next year? I mean, that, that's crazy. We know that medical costs are a very complicated subject. And that's one of the reasons that we think it calls for a great deal of communication. We have lots of questions, and we, we feel like we haven't had an opportunity to ask those, and we haven't really gotten out any answers. We found out about these changes in just really the last few days, and our first Zoom meeting with HR to ask our questions was yesterday. And we didn't get any answers during that meeting. It was just questions. But the retirees, we're committed to being part of the solution. That's why we're proposing we would like to have a committee that can work on creative alternatives. We have an HR expert with 15-plus years of experience. I would volunteer as a finance representative to be part of the committee. We have other actives that we've spoken to that would like to be part, part of that. We would like to, we, we have, many of us have gone through this process many, many times. We would like to help. As many people have said, these retirees took many concessions during the economic downturn to ensure the viability of the township. And I know that the board wants to honor the retirees' contributions, and that's why I'm hopeful that you'll consider the recommendations that we made tonight, that we can freeze the 25 plan at the 24 rates. That is one of our recommendations, that we put together this committee to study this and come up with some more creative solutions, that we opt out of PA 152. In a discussion with CapNIC just today, the CapNIC rep admitted that we are their only client that adheres to PA 152.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Supervisor, I just want to take a quick five-minute recess before
We're going to take a quick recess. Sure, go ahead, Diana.
I want to hear the rest of the public comments.
Feel much better.
Okay, do we have, have order again, and who's next? Who's next at the podium? Any more comments?
Good evening. John Bartle, 7380 Provincial. I am a retired fire captain from the Fire Department, also sit on the board for the Merit Commission. I'm basically here for the Merit Commission employees. First of all, I, I've read some of the Merit bylaws and, and I, and I'm not sure what's going on right now is in the, in the same vein as what is written down in the bylaws. I believe that between 2013 and 2023, the bylaws do state that the employees will get what the active employees are getting, and that's not happening right now. So we can discuss that later at a, at a Merit Commission meeting if you'd like to. Secondly, I want to support and urge the board to listen to some of these people and urge them to form a committee, which I would be happy to sit on as well, to investigate some cost-saving plans for the township, to try to get these costs down. I listened to the Zoom meeting yesterday with CapNIC, and there were a lot of very good suggestions from the employees, retired employees, to try to get these costs down, and I believe that it can be accomplished. I'm not sure that our personnel director looked into any of this, and I believe that she just kind of took their word for what they were saying. And I believe that there's, there's plenty of room for some cost savings for the township. So I do urge that you agree to a committee to be formed, and that we are able to talk to, and also to push back the open enrollment so that this year, these people can benefit from whatever changes they, they look into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joshua Meyer, Canton Township President and retired employee. In terms of the information sharing, Emery, I know, I noticed when somebody said that the information hasn't been shared, you mouthed that's not true, and I'm here to tell you it is true. There were several people
What's I'm talking about?
On the committee last night that asked several questions, and the common theme from the HR director was, "I'll have to get back to you. We'll have to look into this and get back to you." They weren't prepared for the questions. I personally had a phone call with her, and she said she would get back with us, and she has not done that. I had to file a FOIA to get the information, and the township has extended that deadline out to December 13th, yet they're asking me to make a life-changing decision on December 9th without the information that we've requested, so thank you.
Next?
Hello, I'm Fozzy. I'm living here in Canton. Thanks for taking the time to listen to our concerns. I wanted to voice my opposition to the radioactive waste coming into this area. I understand that radioactive waste needs a place to go, but if it comes here, it will be in a residential area. Therefore, potential health risks to the community are amplified compared to if they were dumped in an isolated compared to if they were dumped in an isolated or remote area. As mentioned before, there is an elementary school in that area, so therefore, risks are even higher for young, developing bodies. And many times, negative health effects aren't noted until years later. Hazardous effects can reach out to 10- to 15-mile radius. And since Michigan is surrounded by the Great Lakes, polluting these water sources as well as the soil can also have awful and far-reaching effects. What happens if there's a leak or mishap and the radioactive material escapes? Our community, especially our kids, have a right to live in a safe environment. There are five other states that can accept this waste, but Michigan's very appealing since it has the lowest tipping fees. And so therefore, I ask that we consider to increase these tipping costs to act as a deterrent so we don't prioritize monetary gain over health and safety. Thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too.
My name's John Williams. I'm actually a Van Buren Township resident. I'm not going to quote a bunch of statistics or stats. All I'm saying is we stand in solidarity as a region on the radioactive waste coming into our community. I have personal experience with cancer from Camp Lejeune, which is a little different, but it was a government lying to us. And I haven't got the services through VA and I feel the same way about the radioactive waste coming into our community. There are studies at Lewiston from Rockwell Cancer Institute in Buffalo of the cancer trends and that area of people. Prostate cancer, breast cancer, leukemia, there's a line of it. It's not safe and it's not right. My last statement, many of us have tried to talk to our governor and communicate with her. All we've got is canned responses. Well, gubernatorial elections are going to be in two years. I know our current governor isn't going to run, but I'm sure we'll be taking our feelings to the polls and see what the candidates have to say about our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Hi. My name is Pat Sullivan. I retired from the Police Department as a lieutenant after 28 and a half years of service. And I would like to just kind of echo what my fellow retirees were mentioning, but I would also like to express my dismay and disappointment with the way this was handled. My understanding is that the employee groups had informative meetings and everything set up for them. It was sprung on us last minute and the Personnel Director was woefully underprepared. She went through the plans like we were new hires rather than retirees who have spent our whole lives working here and took those concessions like everybody mentioned. We didn't get our answers, our questions answered at all. And yet, we're still expected to make this December 9th deadline. It's ridiculous. And I completely urge the Board to listen. We're willing to work with you and on behalf of you to get this done because the HR director missed the mark.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I have some online, let's see, emails. Oh, one more, okay. No, I had some emails. I mean, sorry.
Michael Schultz, 44580, Deon Street. I'm strumming the same guitar. When somebody tells me fee, a fee is to cover cost. I've not found anybody yet that can tell me how many millions of dollars they take in administrative fees when I pay my taxes. My guess is it's somewhere between $4 and $8 million because I don't know what businesses pay. These people here, lifetime working. With what money comes into this township, what did you say, $149 million budget? There should be some money to take care of these people. I'm in a lucky position. My insurance is paid for life. But that's something I worked for. I only know one Board member. Very sad that there's no conservatives that are on the Board, but oh, well. Thank you very much and everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Good Thanksgiving. Anyone else in the room? I have some emails. One of them is from Vijaya K. Sastri. "As a resident of Pure Michigan for the past 33 years and a mother and educator, I urge our local authorities to stop the shipment of radioactive materials into Wayne County. The safety and well-being of our community, especially our children, should always be a top priority. We all know Michigan is home to some of the most beautiful landscapes and we pride ourselves on the purity of our lakes, rivers, and air. Keep Pure Michigan pure. Should not be just a slogan, but a responsibility we take seriously for the sake of our environment and the well-being of those who live here. I ask the decision-makers, would you be willing to live near a dumping ground for radioactive waste? If your answer is no, how can you justify imposing this dangerous decision on others who have no choice but to live in these affected areas? We must think about the long-term consequences, not just the short term. We owe it to our children, our community, and ourselves to ensure that we are making the safest choices possible. Wayne County is home to a number of sites that are currently classified as a Superfund Site where hazardous waste has been left behind and poses a risk to the environment and public health. Contaminants like heavy metals and chemicals have already caused environmental damage in these areas. Adding radioactive waste to these already fragile sites would further complicate cleanup efforts and increase risk to local communities. Please stand with us in saying no to the dumping of radioactive waste in Wayne County. Our children's futures depend on it. The potential consequences of exposure, whether through accidents or long-term contamination are too great to ignore. We must protect our families, schools, and neighborhoods from the dangers associated with these materials." Let's see. Oh, and her son also signed it, Kihaia. I also have another one. In a recent Detroit, by Ayesha Sharad. "In a recent Detroit News article dated November 22nd, Melissa Quillard from Republic Services was quoted as saying, 'WGI is designed and permitted to safely and responsibly dispose of hazardous waste. Today's decisions highlight the significant federal interest presented by this matter to provide access to safe, responsible, and necessary disposal solutions without hindering interstate commerce.' That last part is what I'd like to draw our attention to, referring to the transport of this out-of-state hazardous waste, radioactive waste into Michigan as merely a matter of interstate commerce. For those of us who live near the site, this is not merely a matter of interstate commerce. It's a matter of our health and well-being. You cannot put a price on that. Having said that, in a system where our economic interest trumps all other interests, we must create an economic disincentive to discourage the dumping of out-of-state waste in our backyard. Our complaints alone are not enough. Let's raise the tipping fees so Michigan is not the cheapest state but the most expensive state in which to dump other states' toxic waste. Then nobody will want to dump it here, plain and simple. I want to thank the Board for the continued leadership on this issue. This is not a red or blue issue. It's an issue that affects all of us, white, black, or brown, Democrat, Republican, or independent." Thank you. Okay, that's what I have. All right, any other public comment? All right, thank you. Public comment is closed. And now we're going to administrative comments. We'll start there with Director Hoenberger.
Yeah, we're just prepping up and excited for our Turkey Trot coming up later this week. Based on our current registration, it looks like we might set a record. Our current record is 1,402 people registered. So if you haven't signed up, get out and sign up so we can beat that record and contribute as much as possible to the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan.
Thank you. Wendy, do you have anything? Chief Chad?
Nothing to add.
Chris?
Just wanted to comment, as you may have seen in the news there, that we had a tragic fire on Sunday night. So just keep everybody in your prayers, the firefighters, the first responders, police officers, as well as the family and victims, the whole community, the whole.
Dispatchers. Yes, thank you. Thank you for everything you did. Dr. Norwood?
Sure, I just, I may comment. We just recently got notice that we were ordered a grant for electric vehicle charging stations, thanks to the finance team. Mike Shepherd has kind of led the charge in this. This is for charges that are going to go in front of the admin building. At least two Level 2s, could be more based upon the final numbers we get from the budget. We also have pending grants for charging stations at the summit, Village Theater, and Fire Station 2. So more to come as we hear back from these funding agencies.
Great, thank you. Deputy Supervisor?
Just a quick update on the status of the lawsuit that the township has filed along with Belleville, Van Buren, and Romulus against Wayne Disposal, who is the company set to receive radioactive waste from the site in Lewiston, New York as a part of the US Army Corps' FOOSREP program. The case was moved to federal court about six weeks ago and the communities filed a motion to move the case from federal court back to state court so that we could have our public health arguments heard. Wayne Disposal opposed the communities in that motion, claiming that radioactive waste was interstate commerce. And the federal judge ruled against Wayne Disposal and for the communities to move the case back to state court so that our nuisance and public health arguments can be heard. So we don't yet have a hearing date for that, but it's a positive development in the case. And I just wanted to give the folks who commented tonight an update in that regard.
Thank you. Hey, we don't have any administration in the back. Okay, now we will start with Board comments. We'll start down here with Tanya.
Yes, Chief Stockline said we had a tragedy in the community two days ago and, you know, there's a GoFundMe that has been set up. Our clinician is working with them and our thoughts and prayers are with this family of losing family members and losing everything at the time of the holidays is really sad. So if the community can help in any way, there's a GoFundMe that has been set up for them. So please do help. And I'm also, thanks to all the firefighters that were there and worked diligently to put down the fire, chief. And I'm sure our thoughts are with them too because, you know, anytime you come across a tragic situation while working is hard on you. So our thoughts and prayers are also with the firefighters. And I've heard about all the retirees' concerns and I'm sure the Board will have a conversation on this. But if anyone wants to reach out to me, I've reached out to a couple of you back and I've heard back what you had to say after you attended the meeting in the last two days. And we'll see what we can do or work towards coming up with solutions for this.
Well, Thursday is Turkey Day, so I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. My heart goes out to the family who lost their home and their children and them facing this holiday with two empty seats at their table. My heart also goes out to all of the first responders who I know it was really difficult for them to witness that. So thoughts and prayers to everyone. And I agree with what Trustee Ganguly said. I know our police clinician, Kristen Farmer, is trying to rally resources for the family as well as the GoFundMe that's set up. I believe the link is on the Channel 7 article if folks are in a position to be able to donate to that. But yeah, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We'll go down here to Amara. Would you like to say anything on your first day?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. It feels good to know that there are folks who really care about the issues of our residents. So I want to thank the work of our retirees. And this is my first meeting, but, you know, my commitment is to make sure that I work with our residents over at least the next four years. So my name is here, but if you ever want to reach out to me, I'm also accessible via email. I want to make sure that everyone's voices are heard and not just heard, but that we can actually take action on things. And I'm really interested in hearing and learning about everyone's stories and what got them here. And I also want to express my condolences to the family. A two-year-old and a three-year-old were, you know, their lives were lost in this fire. I want to appreciate our Fire and Police Department for their role in, you know, in this event and for continuing to protect and serve our communities. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, I echo what everyone else has said about the tragic fire. It's just horrific and terrible. And I hope that the family is getting all the support they need. I know Kristen Farmer has worked very hard on this. I've been in touch with her and she's getting resources together and I'm sure she's doing it, you know, as well as she can. But that family lost everything. Their house was gutted and all their belongings are gone. So my heart goes out to them and yeah, please, you know, please help support them. I also wanted to say that I did listen intently tonight and I have been reading emails that have come in, many of which were quite long and detailed, which I appreciate. So yeah, you know, I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving and we will see you probably the next time we meet.
Yeah, it's hard. I don't have like a good, like, board public comment statement to make about the fire. It's hard not to personalize that, especially with two young kids at home myself. And so I'm kind of internally, kind of still struggling with how I feel about that. It's devastating and it's awful and I'm extremely grateful to have the first responders in Canton Township that we do. And I, you know, I'll be thinking about that this holiday season and that family's loss. And then again, it's also hard not to personalize or to put myself in the shoes of some of the retirees who came here today. I can't imagine, I mean, I can imagine to some extent, but I mean, to have the same healthcare plan last year be an extra $2,200 expense. That is jarring, especially for some of the folks who retire earlier than others and still have a lot of dependents, you know, larger, you know, families. That's a, it's a large cost. And so I'm really grateful that a lot of the comments were solution-driven and I'm grateful at the tone and the respect for public comments because I can only imagine, especially given the time of year, how people are internally feeling about that. So thank you to everybody and I heard the comments tonight and I appreciate it.
Ms. Savins?
Excuse me, I want to echo what my colleagues have said. Thoughts and prayers go both to the family and to our first responders. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. I too have read all the emails and letters and I appreciate all the words that you've given to us tonight. We have a lot to think about. I do appreciate all of you coming out tonight. And lastly, I want to remind everybody, property taxes will be mailed out Thursday. So they'll be coming to your mailboxes this next week. You can go online to see them right now, but you can't pay them until December 1. We cannot collect them. And just a footnote, admin fees that we charge, that does go to pay the assessors, printing and publishing, and protecting our roles. So those dollars do go for all of that. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And again, thank you all for coming out. I do appreciate your emails and letters.
Thanks, Diane. So I just, I want to just say some things because I listened, I received a lot of emails and calls and spoke to some people and met with our internal staff here. And I just want to reiterate some things that I heard tonight also. So here are some things that were, I came up with. So all active employees and retirees in this community continue to have access to a quality, free healthcare plan and that's important. When we talk about retirees, I just want everybody to know that we're talking about people retired from the township before the age of 65. So retirees aged 65 and older are not affected by the Blue Care Network's rate changes this year. The $1,500 deductible plan now costs $34 a month for a single active employee and about $75 a month for a single retiree. This is for full coverage, low deductible, quality healthcare plan. I got online and I looked at the marketplace out there. So the Blue Cross Network in Michigan, LMO Bron Secure for a single person right now for people trying to buy their healthcare is $273. um, for people trying to buy their healthcare, is 273 a month with a $9,200 deductible. A family is $1,092 a month with an $18,400 deductible. So you can see the, just, the big differences here. Canton Township and our, our manager, our HR manager, work very hard. A lot of the emails that I read, she did all of that. And I, I do, I want to say something about tone and manner. I listened to some of the, um, meeting yesterday, and I was really alarmed about how our HR manager was treated. And I really ask at that stop, because she's a very nice person, and she's very respectful and trying herself. So I ask for respect for her when you speak to her, that's, we all deserve that. Retiree health insurance costs more than health insurance for active employees, because the insured pool consists of retirees who use more healthcare services. The pools must be separate per Michigan law. I also want to say that, um, Blue Care Network rate changes in 2025 are due to Canton, along with many other local governments in Michigan being over the hard cap set by PA 152. It is true, there are communities that don't follow what, what PA 152, but their healthcare costs are very much higher. I also, um, did some informal calls to different municipalities, at different mayors and supervisors in the area, and those residents, and those, I'm sorry, those employees and retirees are paying much higher healthcare than Canton Township, because we work to keep it down, we really do. Canton has continued to pay down its OPEB and pension liabilities for the employees, especially in the past four years. This board now prefunds both, which has never been the case in the past, giving greater retirement security to its retirees. This has been a multimillion-dollar commitment each year by this board. Canton also restored its defined benefit pension for public safety in the past four years, after having it discontinued by a previous board. We knew that was important. Canton also recently enhanced its benefit offerings for active employees to include more dental coverage, vision insurance, and better life and disability insurance. So you can see that we do care about our employees. What I do want to talk about is PA 152. This community has participated in PA 152 hard cap since 2013, when three administrations ago you were asked to take concessions this would put into place. Although retirees are not recovered by PA 152, their rates are impacted because the plans offered to active employees are also offered to retirees. If rates go up for active employees, the retiree rates go up as well. Canton has kept active employee and retiree rates nearly flat for 10 years. This occurred during a time of rising healthcare costs for most people in the public and private sectors. This actually even happened the last four years. PA 152 needs to be fixed by the state legislature. We had a meeting today with State Representative Ranji Puri and State Senator Dana Paul Hankey stating the same. Canton Township is the only community that is asking for this. We're pushing for this, because we know it's important to keep your healthcare costs low. As healthcare costs rise, neither local government or public employees are well-positioned to absorb the cost of increasing premiums. That's why this cap is good. That's why it was established actually in this township in 2013. So Canton is with you in supporting changes to this that lowers costs for everyone. There is a bill in the current legislature that would address this shortcomings. Contact the state legislature and ask them to support this bill. Unfortunately, local governments like Canton cannot afford to begin paying retiree healthcare costs as, as it keeps rising. We need help, and we're asking our state legislatures to give us this help. So especially when we're still paying for decisions to cover healthcare costs made nearly 30 years ago. Again, this is for people, as I said, that are below 65. So please contact your state legislatures. In terms of information, um, our HR manager did have a, a Zoom with information there, and that's what I meant. That information was in a PowerPoint, and she will give it out. She also had another meeting today. So we can all work together, and I'm telling you what we are up against. And healthcare costs change year to year. So this is a negotiation we have with the market every single year. It's not just one and done. And we will continue to fight for everybody, active and retirees. Um, I just want to say, please contact, again, your state legislature, uh, as we did today. We asked for help for that. So we, we will continue to push back and continue to fight. So that's that one. I also want to say, um, on a happier note, um, well, Thanksgiving is here, it's coming up, and our updated radioactive waste was given. We will continue to fight for the community in radioactive waste. We ask for you to contact the Governor's Office continually, State Representative Puri, and State Senator Dana Paul Hankey, as well as your congresspeople, because these laws have to change, or Michigan will continue to be a dumping state. And I can, I, Jessica, you and your group, I really appreciate everything that you're doing to help stop this and help fight for this. That's all that I have. Did anybody else want to comment? Another comment, board? Okay, well, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes.